Okay, Mr. Blazey, we are live. All right, thank you. Call the meeting to order 6:06. If you could all please rise for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Blazey?
Here.
Darlin?
Here.
Fitzgerald?
Here.
Hannah? Is she on mute?
Here.
Jordan?
Here.
King? McCusker, here. Nolan?
Here.
Stockdale?
Here.
Dine, here.
Thank you. The minutes were presented from the regular meeting was held on the 15th. Can I have a motion to approve if there's no question?
So move.
Second.
Any questions? Motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Do we have a student report tonight? Thanks. For the administrative reports, Ms. Everland?
You're going first.
Yeah, let me start off. Yeah, included in your folder, I have a letter, it says, it starts off Pennsylvania Department of Education. It's regarding the PSSAs for the year 2021. So, you know, they, the 1920, we didn't have, and then the 2021, you know, when those were given, they're not expected to be an adequate representation of, of progress for that year. But they're being used so we can see our way out of the skills deficit that students have found themselves in since COVID. So I printed off both the elementary school and the Sullivan County Junior/Senior High off of the Future Ready PA Index. And in that letter from the state, it just talks about how the state is about 73% for taking the test last year, when it's usually about 98%. For us, not every student took all sections of the PSSA. So it's very difficult to see how that same student is scoring both in English and math. That being said, if you look at our scores from last year, they're not as horrible as one may think. So what the principals will be providing is Samantha has some information on the foresight testing that she completed this year. But when we're talking about moving out of COVID and how to improve PSSA testing, it's not the testing that needs to be improved, it's what supports the testing, it's the curriculum behind it. So Lynn is going to discuss, and you'll see within the curriculum section, a realignment of some of our courses, the addition of courses. And in the elementary, it's teaching phonics and phonetics. Some new programs that will be universally adopted, so everyone's teaching the same thing. So we can actually have growth for our students. So just take, for example, in math, our math courses are out of sequence based on their testing for the PSSA. So it's the realignment of our schedule in order to make those tests actually be reflective. So look through that. Also, you can visit the website, Future Ready PA Index. And if you have any questions, certainly, I want you to be able to take some time and digest that and go online and compare our school with others or the state, the state averages, just to see where our problems are. And then, you know, come back in April and we can have a further discussion. I think that's probably the best way to do it, instead of showing some slick charts that the state has. And especially, I want you to hear what the administrators have to say of how we're going to correct that. And then I think that'll put it into context. And if we have a further discussion on it, you'll know what we're doing to try to, to try to work our way out of the skills deficit that we find ourselves in. So Lynn?
I just, sorry I went out of order, but I wanted to comment. I, I think we really appreciate that because I know that we brought that up as far as the slick charts. Because I think that there was, in the past, there really was just like, oh, here's a chart, here's a graph, here's, here's the, the results, and, and there really was no time left for, I guess, appropriate discussion to talk about those. So really appreciate that. Thanks for listening.
I believe we're going to save the curriculum discussion to the cur- I have something else to present right now, we'll save that for later. But something that some of you have heard about before, the pathways to graduation, if you've been on the board for a couple of years, that's been brought up as reasons behind some of the changes that were made. I'm not sure if you were able to understand, and we've got a lot of new board members. So this is a change to graduation requirements for our seniors. It will actually affect the juniors this year, so the graduating class of 2023, it was supposed to affect the graduating class this year, but was pushed back a year because of COVID. I'm going to try to present a slideshow here, so bear with me. Can you see my screen? Okay, so in the past, the gradu-, one of the graduation requirements for students, and this is not pertaining to classes taken or courses, was for students to show proficiency in Algebra I, literature, and biology. And when they first started this, the goal was different each year for how many kids were proficient or advanced on those exams. And by, I believe it was by the year 2020, you were supposed to show 100% proficiency. And then they realized that wasn't realistic, they kept delaying, meeting the certain marks, and then eventually they decided they had to come up with a new plan. And in 2018, they came up with the pathways to graduation. And you can read here, Act 158, which is the Pathways to Graduation Act, expands the options for students to demonstrate post-secondary readiness through four additional pathways that morally, more fully illustrate college career and community readiness. And it says graduating class of 2022, again, like I said, that was pushed back to next year's graduating class. You have a graphic that's in your folder also, that helps with the five different pathways. So we know we have students that are not great at high-stakes testing, and this will help them be successful and reach their graduation requirements. So there are five pathways. One is still their traditional Keystone proficiency pathway, so that they take the test. Two of the exams are given in ninth grade, and the third one is in 10th grade. So they'll know early on if they've met that pathway. And if they're proficient or advanced, they would meet that pathway in the three testing areas. Number two is the Keystone composite pathway. So maybe they're really good in math and their score on their Keystone exam, Algebra I exam was really high. As long as they meet proficiency on one of them, and you can, this, I should just keep going, hold on. Now I skipped one. Well, if you look at this chart, the second row, the Keystone composite, if their three scores add to 4,452 or greater, they achieve proficiency. Now, there's a special case for next year's seniors. They would have taken, they would have been in some of those Keystone classes when there were no Keystone exams. So they cannot meet pathway two with the composite score because they don't have scores for Algebra I and Biology, because they were given proficiency if they passed the course, because there were no Keystone exams given that year. The third pathway, and you'll see the third, fourth, and fifth kind of go together on the chart, you can see that. And it says, meet local grade-based requirements for Keystone content in which student is less than proficient. So this would be if they didn't receive proficiency on the exam, they would have to pass the course that is connected to that, but they would also have to do one of the three following requirements for each area they are not proficient. So one of the pathways would be career and technology education. And that would be, they obtain an industry-based competency certification. That might be if they're in the hotel restaurant, restaurant, they earn the serve safe certification. It could be a forklift certification, which some of the programs at the Career Center give that certification. That's one of the ways, one of the pieces of evidence. The second, alternate assessment, which is the fourth pathway, and again, this is for any area that they don't meet proficiency in. They could attain, attainment of one alternative assessment score. And if you look at the chart, the scores are there. We recently gave the ASFAB, where they have to earn a 31. And we just had recruiters in talking to our juniors that took that test, helping them to, to understand what their score means. And we had a high rate of percent of students that had 31 or higher. So they've already met that piece of evidence, those students. And you can read down through there, I'm not going to read them all to you. Some of them are AP scores, some of them are dual and Roma courses, or an acceptance to a four-year college is a piece of evidence. Okay? And then the fifth pathway is evidence-based. And they have to achieve one of the pieces of evidence from the first set and two pieces of evidence from the last set of options there. Some of that has to do with SAT scores, AP scores, successful completion of any concurrent or post-secondary course, another industry-recognized certification, acceptance into an other-than-four-year institute for college work. And then two pieces from the items down below, a proficient or advanced on any Keystone exam, successful completion of a servants, service learning project, which I think is a good experience for kids, letter guaranteeing full employment, completion of an internship, externship. And then there's another one for those that might be going into Division II athletics as well for NCAs. But I wanted to explain this to you a little bit, because it kind of moves away from the everybody has to be proficient or advanced on the three tests. There are other options now for students, which I think is a great opportunity for them, because they're not all test takers, they're not all going to a four-year college, and they have finally come up with something that will help those students meet that criteria. Any questions? You can think about it, and if you have questions, you can let me know later, too. The PowerPoint, you have this in your folder, this is probably just as easy to understand.
I'll just say, one thing we talked about in curriculum committee meeting, where Lynn walked us through this as well, is just the idea that, I mean, you know, number one, like, awesome to see the state making moves to honor more experiences and different kinds of intelligence and, and offer these alternate pathways. And then two, just like Lynn talked about at the beginning, like, making sure kids and families are aware after they've taken those three tests where they stand, and then what the other options are. So that's definitely something that I'm planning to do.
I'd also like to just give a shout out to Kalen Wetlawfer, who was the February Student of the Month, and also to Colton Wade, who was the District Four 106 pound champion in wrestling recently, and the Northeast Regional Wrestling Champion at 106, and was able to go to the state tournament this past weekend.
All right, I'm going to hop back quickly to follow up on the Future Ready PA Index that Doug was talking about. So the data he gave you, as he stated, was the 2020-2021 school year. And a lot of the trends that we're seeing are similar to the 2018-2019, or what we would consider our last normal year. So although those numbers don't look similar, the trends of the strengths and challenges are very similar. When we are working as a team for our comprehensive plan, we were advised by the IU to utilize that 2018-2019 data. But it is, you know, certainly this is going into the planning of that as well. And it is kind of, you know, confirms the direction that we're heading in a lot of areas, because we see a lot of those trends. So moving into the foresights, we just finished the foresights in the high school and the elementary school. And I wanted to just kind of take a minute and back up the foresight train a bit to just kind of explain a bit that it is a benchmark assessment. So when we give a benchmark assessment, we are trying to determine how well our students are progressing towards proficiency. It's, you know, set on grade-level curriculum standards. This is basically our indication of how the students will do on the PSSAs. Although most schools have moved away from the foresights to the CDTs, we did utilize the foresights this year. Things to take into consideration, it was new online for the kiddos, so that's really the only test, one of the only few tests that they would take in this format. The diagnostic assessment would be used more to guide instruction, to specifically target and meet students' needs and their strengths as far as impact on education-wise. So the benchmark assessment, the foresights, we took at the beginning of the year, around November, and then again in February. And we break it down by math and reading per grade level. And every single grade level in the elementary school and subject area showed an increase in advanced and proficient students. So the growth is there, it's happening. Although our percentages, we would want to be a little higher, we're on track. And our teachers and our students are working very hard. And I was very pleased, as well as I know the admin team was too, to see that progression, progression towards proficiency. Any questions on foresights before I hop into a little bit about curriculum? Okay. So tonight on the agenda, as far as elementary curricular changes, is to speak to that briefly. We went over it with the curriculum committee, but we are proposing the addition of Hagerty Phonymic Awareness and Wilson Foundation's Phonics Instruction. So those are two programs that I would love to speak to later, if you have any questions on them. Thank you.
The only thing that I have to add to my report this evening is I just wanted to update the board on our progress with PASA assessments. For those of you that don't know, the PASA assessment is the Pennsylvania Alternate State Assessment. And this is the alternate to the PSSA for students with our most significant cognitive abilities in the, in the district. And these are, this is for students that have modified curriculum that aren't using the regular education, typical classroom curriculum. We have, the test administrators have all been trained, the test window is open. And we're going to begin that process. We do that different than the PSSA testing, where we have just a couple days that we have blocked out that we're just doing testing. We do this based on when the students are ready and kind of their needs and their day, and we take it slowly and we use up a good chunk of the testing window so that we can get the most accurate score that we can for the students. So we kind of are flexible with that, and we just do it, you know, based on who's ready that day. And we take, we take whoever's ready, we do the assessment, it is done individually with the students. And, but we're making progress on that, the training is ready, we're ready to go. So I just wanted to give you an update on that.
Mr. Bill, do you have anything? Thanks, I'm not even sure how I got muted, I didn't touch anything. Mr. McMahon? He might be muted, too.
How about now? Okay. Hepco finally came in here a week or so ago and finally finished putting all the locks and exterior doors here in the auditorium. And that was a long ordeal. Through them, according to Chris Burgess, the president of Hepco, they are considered to be done here. MHE is, has some other things that they're working on to try to resolve, and they may still be involved. I don't know about that yet, I haven't got any answers here yet. And as in my report, they're also working on some, some things to repair the lights here at the runway. I met today, actually, with Dale Firster Jr. down on the baseball field to see what can be done with the draining issues that have been there for many years. We actually looked at this back in 2019, but they, but due to the budget and then other things that happened during that time period, nothing ever went forward with that. So we came up with some plans there. He knows an engineer of sort that did that kind of stuff for a living, who's currently retired. He may have him come look at this also. But we have some ideas of our own to, to implement, and see if that makes any sense there. And then he can give me some dollar value to what we're thinking about, so. I'm sorry? Your baseball only.
You're muted.
Yeah, but just for this year, because I don't, you know, I don't know dollar-wise. Of course, we don't know what we're looking at here. And those steps would be going forward. You know, the soccer field would be the next one, I'm not really quite sure where to go with that one because of the way it was put together. If Gabe, or I don't know if you guys remember, that used to have a track in it also. And at that time, it was, the elevation was higher. I don't know what changed there, that was out of that loop during that whole time period, but I'm not sure where to go with that one, other than physically raising it. So, because it's, you know, it's a flat plain, we have houses, we've got the little baseball field, the Port's baseball field down on the other side of it. There's drainage that runs down the other side. So that, that's going to be a tough one to conquer, I'm afraid. But we'll go forward, we'll start with the baseball, because that one's been historically, since I've been here, they've never been able to play when they want to play there. We always have to do the way games first and let that dry out. And that's, we want to try to resolve. So we'll see how that works out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anything else? All right. We do have some public input that was submitted from Ms. Alice Carpenter.
I'm Alice Carpenter, and for those of you who don't know me, I'm both a teacher in the district and a taxpayer in the county. It is in my capacity as a taxpayer that I'm appearing tonight. I have come with some concerns regarding the change to how committee meetings are being conducted. My main concern is how the public is going to know when committee meetings are occurring and what is going to be discussed. Secondary to that concern is the idea that it appears as if the board is trying to circumvent public participation in committee meetings with the newly employed approach. Just as a reminder, there is a schedule of committee meetings as well as a list of committee appointments posted on the district website. With that idea in mind, I find it quite curious that this month- the date.
It's the internet, not you.
Thank you, Hal, for clarifying.
I think it's you, but.
We're good. I'm not sure where I left off. I'll start with, there is a schedule of committee meetings as well as a list of committee appointments posted on the district website. With that idea in mind, I find it quite curious that this month's committee agendas didn't, don't, or didn't list a date or time for those meetings to occur. And I don't believe any committee meetings except finance were livestreamed, when all previous committee meeting agendas listed that information and have been livestreamed since COVID. So did those meetings occur? And if so, where and when did they take place? And what was discussed? I also find it interesting that until tonight's board meeting agenda, all the appointed committees made recommendations for consideration by the full board. For instance, last month, one of the discussion items at the Athletics and Health Committee meeting was an approval of the Athletic Trainer Services Agreement. And that came out of committee as a recommendation to the board to approve that. However, this month's, this month, all agenda items, with the exception of finance, which, by the way, was held at its regular time and streamed, are presented as administration recommends, no longer committee recommendations, but administration recommendations. So does the board still have functioning committees as appointed and listed on the website? And if so, my question again is, how is the public going to know when those meet, those committees are meeting and what they are discussing? Anybody?
So, yeah, the, the committee still exists, there's, there's actually 10 committees. And the board essentially made an assessment.
I watched the board meetings, so I know what you said. I'm just wondering, there's been no other communication. I mean, at, at one point, you actually even said, we might hold them by phone. I mean, I can't even imagine that that's legal, but.
No, it is, because a committee, as long as you don't have a quorum, the committees can meet and discuss items of interest for the district.
Even if, even if you have a list of appointed committees and published meeting dates? Like committee appointments?
Yeah, you can have, there can be as many people as you want on the committee, as long as there's not a quorum present at any point in time, the committee can actually meet and discuss anything they want. Actually, what the board's finding with this, trying something new, is what was actually held on the second Tuesday of every month prior to the board meetings in the past wasn't really even a committee meeting, it was a, it was a meeting of, it was a meeting of the-
Right. Again, I, I've listened, like, I've watched every board meeting, every committee up until-
So what's your specific question, then?
I, I'm concerned that because there are appointed committees with appointed, with a schedule on the board, on the district website, that you're not holding those, so that, who knew when you were holding those this month's committee meetings except finance? Who was able to attend? I find it unfortunate, one of the comments that I heard a board member remark was, "Well, they're not here, so they must not care." Well, that's flat out not true, because we didn't know. For instance, I've heard, only because I am in the building, I've heard that you had a discussion about athletic, the athletic director position. I heard you had a discussion about the curriculum changes. I would have loved to be, been involved and had input in both of those discussions, and I would have attended, but I didn't know when they were happening. That's, that's not really fair. So I'm all for, and I, I appreciate the fact that the board is willing to meet and discuss more so than any other board has before, or administration for that matter. However, how are we supposed to participate? Do you really want our participation if you're not telling us when the meetings are?
We'd be happy to include you in the, any of the meetings that you want.
So then, so then my question, then, then my question is still, how is the public going to know? That was my question, how is the public going to know when they're occurring and what is, when, what is being discussed?
So it's, it's extremely difficult for a board to function appropriately if, in fact, we have to include everyone in the public at every discussion that happens, nothing really moves.
You have a Facebook page, you have a district webpage, can't you just post it on? The committee meetings, the committee, the Athletics and Health Committee meeting is, or committee is meeting Tuesday, the 18th, at such-and-such a time somewhere. Like, in this day and age with technology, hmm, you should be able to get that message out.
Yeah, I don't see a problem with that at all, actually. John, is there any issue with that in regards to- John, is there any issue with that in regards to, um, the timing? Because the one element is that if we have a committee meeting where more than four board members attend, then that has to be publicized and the timing has to be exact. So part of the reason why we have to be cautious not to develop another committee of the whole meeting by, by actually, uh, publicizing or announcing the time. So if there's no issues with that from a timing perspective, I, we have, we see no issues of any committee meets and the public or stakeholder wants to attend, there's, 100 people could come to a committee meeting.
But again, if you're not letting people know when it is, they can't attend. So you have to figure this out.
So. Mayan?
Mm-hmm.
Mayan, can you hear me? I'm sorry. Okay. Is that better? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right. Um, there's no problem with publishing the time. Uh, you're correct though, that once you get more than four members of the committee, it has to be something that's published in advance and, and set forth, um, 48 hours in advance. But if you have less than, uh, a quorum, you, you can do that, but you could certainly, um, notify the community with time, um, that you would have that meeting.
No problem then. I actually think it's a good idea. Cause it is difficult for us to broadcast it, but, um, there's no issues with that at all. We can, we can publish every committee meeting and whoever wants to attend can attend. As long as there's not four board members. A hundred people from the public could come attend the committee meeting if they wanted to.
Okay, so the quorum is of the full board, not of the committee, appoint, appointed committee?
Well, essentially, if more than four board members.
I understand the concept. I'm just asking which quorum, like the appoint, so the.
Quorum of the board.
Quorum of the board.
Okay.
Quorum of the board.
Okay. All right, that was my question. When, how and when are we gonna know?
From this moment forward, we can just publicize them on the website or on the Facebook page, all the committee meetings. It's no problem.
With, with tentative discussion items? Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, again, repeating the goal that you said you already listened in on, we knew it was going to be clumsy or cumbersome trying to change this, something that's been happening for 20 years. The real goal is to actually generate more discussion and more movement. And actually, it has been. So valid point and really no problem.
Well, unfortunately, a lot of times the, there's some dry stuff at those curriculum meetings, but the two that you just had that I would really have been interested in attending are already gone. So they were this month. So.
Well, thanks for speaking up and apologize for that. Hey Lance, is there any, uh, other public input outside of people present? Just checked, there, there is not. Okay. Um, we did have an executive session before the meeting. As we stated before, this always sort of falls in, but we're trying not to stop the meeting. Um, so we did have a short executive session prior to the meeting. And, uh, with that, we'll go to finance. Hal?
The finance committee recommends the acceptance of the following reports. The treasures report number eight for February, the cafeteria fund for February, the building fund for February, and the capital project funds for February, an ISO move.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried?
The finance committee recommends approval of the check registers in the February budget summary for a total of $1,503,375.88, an ISO move.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The finance committee recommends the approval of the following payment requests. Auditorium payment request, Hepco, uh, $29,895.57, MHE engineering for $2,692.06, uh, for the sports entrance payment request, MHE engineering, $2,623.02, and also MHE for $25,500, an ISO move.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any questions about that?
Uh, just have one thing. Uh, we're gonna, when are we gonna get the drawings?
I'll send those, uh, tomorrow to the board and then we can coordinate a meeting with MHE.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that, um, I'll send the, the new drawings to the board tomorrow in email. Um, and then we can coordinate a meeting with MHE. That has, uh, the changes that were requested.
I'll assume that's what these, uh, payments.
Payments are for.
Yeah, yes.
For the sports entrance are for, for the drawings?
Guys, good? Yep. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
Finance committee recommends approval of a grant, to accept a grant of $1,500 from Sullivan County Rural Electric Cooperative to be used in the science and vocational education. An ISO move.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Anything else for you, Hal?
That is all for me. Thank you.
Um, athletics and health? Anthony?
Yep. Um, athletics and health, item A. Administration recommends approval of the change of job description for the athletic extracurricular director job description, an ISO move.
Second.
Uh, motion in a second. Anybody have any questions? Sure.
If someone's speaking, we can't hear them.
What that was is, sorry, they can't hear you on here. Uh, Alice was asking for a copy of the, um, job description.
Are here. Here, Alice. She have it.
Here's one.
Yeah, it's somewhere. I just looked down, turn.
No problem. Anybody else have any questions before we take it to a vote? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
Item B, administration recommends approval to post and advertise for the anticipated athletic extracurricular director, and ISO move.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
Item C, the administration recommends adding Michael Baldwin and Josh Fitzgerald to the list of approved volunteer coaches, an ISO move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And that is all for athletics and health.
Thank you. Buildings and grounds, Mr. Fitzgerald?
Before we move on to that, I, I'd like to, uh, come off of what, uh, Lynn had said about Colton Wade. Uh, he, uh, took first at sectionals, first at districts, and first at regionals. And regionals qualified him for states. He, uh, for a freshman, for any, uh, grade wrestler, he did really well. And he conducted himself with, uh, poise and honor, uh, that he himself, his family, uh, his coaches and the schools should be proud of. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Agree. Thanks, Joe.
Okay, item A, with buildings and grounds, information, facilities use requests were received from the following district organizations. Sullivan County High School Auditorium, the, uh, Sullivan County Griffin Players, the High School Cafeteria, the Griffins Varsity Basketball Banquet, the High School Cafeteria, the Junior High, uh, Basketball Sports Banquet, uh, the Sullivan County Gym and Cafeteria, the Cheerleading Showcase and Banquet, the, uh, Sullivan County Elementary School Cafeteria, uh, the SCSD Health and Wellness Program, uh, the Sullivan County High School Gym, uh, the SCHS preseason baseball workouts, uh, the Sullivan County High School Cafeteria, uh, the Spring Flame Dance. Item B, an administration recommends approval of the use of facilities. Requests from the Sullivan County Little League for the use of the baseball field and softball fields on March 15th to August 20th, uh, 2022, uh, from 3:30 PM to 8:00 PM. An ISO move. Second.
Any questions? I just want to make a comment on that. Um, that's a broad brush stroke from March to August. Uh, and one thing I know the Little League always does is communicates with the, the school to make sure there's no collision of scheduling, uh, with any of the facilities, whether it be, you know, the gym or the field, softball field, baseball field. So, uh, I just want to make that clarification because that's a, that's a big, it's a giant window. Um, the reason that it was submitted that way is because of the flexibility and schedule. Sometimes they get pushed, sometimes it moves up into the, into the March and, and April timeframe. So just wanted to make that comment before we take it to vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Anything else? Thanks, Joe. Uh, curriculum and student activities?
Yep, thank you. Um, just want to ask a question before we get into these. Alice asked about the administration recommends versus the committee recommends. What is the reasoning behind the language?
Um, when we had that, you know, generally when we have a committee, then it would be the committee recommends. And we had two members of committee out of, out of four. So it was administration recommends because, you know, we didn't really have a full committee.
Got it.
So I, I didn't want to presuppose that the committee was agreeing to those items.
Got it. That makes sense. I mean, I asked that because I just, I just want to say that, you know, um, point heard about the open meetings and we'll certainly, uh, fix that going forward. And going through these point by point, you know, I, I would absolutely, you know, sign off on these based on the, the meeting that we had. So I think Lynn and, and Sam are both are going to give us more context tonight. Um, before we get into all the individual items for high school, Ms. Everlin, do you want to give any kind of overview of like where these are coming from, why now, and, and what your process was?
So included in your packet, I provided this to the curriculum committee. It's just some of the highlights as to why I was making these recommendations for changes. Uh, many of them have to do to prepare our students, uh, better to meet, uh, graduation requirements. As Doug said, the test, you can't change the test. That's not how you improve test scores and our performance, um, in the different areas on the future ready index. Um, of course, math is my specialty area, so you'll see the first couple areas are math because that's where I feel I'm an expert, um, getting to learn a lot more about the other areas as well. And I've been here for a while, so I know the history, why things were changed. And some of those reasons don't exist anymore. Um, so it doesn't make sense to continue doing things that way if it's not for what's best for our students. And these changes are all made with what's best for our students in mind. I don't know if you want me to wait to each bullet to add anything?
Does the board, do other board members have a preference hearing about all of them now versus point by point? There's just so much here. I want to make sure everybody feels clear on the vote.
I think we should go point by point, otherwise we're gonna be asking.
Yeah.
We'll be confused on what we're answering.
Yeah. Yeah, the only other thing that, that you shared the other night that I would want to highlight here, Ms. Everlin, is that like you had conversations with your staff about what are the areas of need in our program?
Uh, both Ms. Kaler and myself met with our staff on the 20th, February 21st and, you know, let them tell us what they thought was good about their program and where there were areas of need. And so changes here, we're taking their input as well as our own into consideration when we made these recommendations. Thank you for mentioning that.
As well as, yeah, go in addition to ongoing conversations throughout the school year. You know, people have been coming, your teachers, students have been coming to us all year with ideas. So, you know, took everything into consideration.
And some research was also done into other districts' curriculum guides and their requirements and, you know, kind of seeing what worked for them as well.
Have you guys had any parental, uh, thoughts or comments on the curriculum, um, unsolicited or solicited?
Um, when we did our comprehensive plan survey, we pulled parents, community members, and we took the results from that, uh, survey into consideration as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I asked that because I thought it was important, you know, for us to realize like how comprehensive this process was that generated this list. Um, and I thought it was especially important, you know, that both principals talked to the people actually teaching the courses to learn what the needs were. So thank you for all the work that went into this.
And I appreciate that comment as well because I've sat in the seat as the staff member who was told this is what we're gonna do because I said so. And we don't want that feeling here. We want to be working together as a team.
So let's take it point by point. Item A, administration recommends approval of the Sullivan County High School, uh, mathematics curriculum sequence to Algebra I, Geometry and Algebra II, and I so move.
Second.
Go ahead.
I have a, I have a thought here, just because there is a lot in A through L, is that it is acceptable to take more than one of these in a single motion. But what, what I will ask is that if the board has any specific questions or they want to pull one out, um, we can actually do that. But it is acceptable, Mary Elise, if you want to, to actually take, you know, pose the motion as elements A through L. Um, if in fact, somebody wants something pulled out and you want to vote on it individually, we can also do that.
Or what I could propose is like A through D all have to do with math. E and F have to do with history. So that might be a, a compromise, like.
Yep. I'm just throwing, however you want to do it, I'm just throwing it out there.
Any objections from admin? Okay. Okay, so I think what I'll do is I'll reread that and kind of group A through D together. Let me know if I do this incorrectly. Administration recommends approval of the Sullivan County High School Mathematics Curriculum Sequence to Algebra I, Geometry and Algebra II. Recommends approval to add Foundations of Algebra and Keystone Algebra to the course curriculum guiding course offerings. Recommends approval to add Advanced Math VII and Honors Algebra I. Recommends approval to add Honors Geometry and Honors Algebra II, and I so move.
Second. Did we have to withdraw our last motion? See, we made a motion in a second and then we just ignored it. But we already did, we already made a motion in a second. Two motions.
Okay. Okay. Do I need to say anything? Okay, do I need to say anything else?
Okay, now, we have a motion in a second, okay?
Thank you.
Yeah, just trying to.
I know.
Keep it straight here. Is all these courses, is this going to take additional staff?
It is not. It's renaming some of the courses and grouping students instead of mixing the advanced students in with other students or the students that struggle with ma- math in with students that are advanced. It's separating them a little bit so you can focus. Right now, our advanced students are not performing advanced on our Algebra One Keystone Assessment or in our PSSAs because they're not able to cover as much content or in depth because they're kind of held at a mediocre level. So it's just changing the grouping a little bit. It is not adding extra courses to the curriculum.
So we're homogeneous grouping instead of heterogeneous grouping?
Somewhat, but you are homogeneous grouping if you're not allowing students to transfer between the different groups. Like if we have a student who starts in Foundations of Algebra and they're doing great, teacher recommendation, Guidance Office recommendation can move them to the regular Algebra One course.
I'm not opposed to it. I'm just just trying to understand exactly what's going on.
That's a good question.
Those were my questions. Thank you.
Did you, or do you understand? Do you have any?
Yeah, I understand that we're going to take the kids that are advanced in Algebra One and we're going to put them all in the same classroom. Right, and the kids that aren't, they're going to be in another classroom, which I think is, I think is an excellent idea.
It will give them appropriate curriculum and content for what they're able to handle.
I I think that's an excellent idea and I like that.
I agree.
Okay.
I think it helps with students that want or are headed towards that as far as career path progression, as far as advancement and focus.
I do want to underline, though, that as Lynn talked about, it's not a, it's not, oh, you took Foundations of Algebra and now you are not able to progress to something more advanced. And I I do think that's important, that there are, that there can be movement, as Lynn spoke to.
In in the past, with the sequencing, Algebra Two was changed to after Algebra One because at one point when they were requiring proficiency or advanced on the Keystone exams, you could use Algebra Two as a remediation course for Algebra One. That's why it was moved there. That requirement is no longer there. And Algebra Two is more abstract and is usually more suited to an older student. And when you take a geometry course, there's a lot of basic algebra in the geometry course. You're solving equations the whole time. So we're hoping that it will strengthen the foundation of their algebra skills before they move on to Algebra Two. And that sequencing has been, was in place probably about eight years ago before it was changed. And our math scores were comparable to other schools in the area and not so much anymore.
That's the way it was when I was a kid.
Me too.
Good, good stuff. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
All right, I'm in a group E, F and G together correctly from get go. Administration recommends adding back the fourth credit of history as a graduation requirement contingent upon adequate staffing. Recommends adding American History One and American History Two as course offerings contingent upon adequate staffing. And recommends adding a Pennsylvania and local history course contingent upon adequate staffing. An ISO move.
Second.
Any questions?
Would this, my standard question first, would add staff?
This would add a history teacher back that was removed two years ago. With the current state of what's going on in the world, I think our students need to be educated on what's taken place in the past, you know, as well as where we are now. Talking to the history teachers, they are having a lot of difficulty getting all of American history into one course. Okay? So their recommendation was to make that two courses again. When this was presented to the board to drop the fourth credit of history, it, there was a major focus on the pathways to graduation. And I didn't even plan this, just that I presented that earlier. Did you hear anything about a fourth credit of history in the pathways to graduation that I presented earlier? It had nothing to do with course offerings and electives. But it was presented that way. It was also presented that students, as they reached the end of their high school career, would have opportunities to take electives more suited to the careers they were going into. Well, that extra elective class, students get to take in ninth grade. That's where it showed up. We have a limited number of electives that students can take in ninth grade because a lot of electives are based on prior electives. So there's only so many classes they can take. And it was very difficult doing the schedule this year to try to get the students into electives that they were interested in. A lot of them didn't get into the electives that they were interested in. Okay? So the way it was presented isn't the way it actually has been happening. Okay? We have also, Act Thirty-five has added a civics exam or a civics test that students need to take. That will be part of the future ready index this year. So why would we take away history classes when we're adding an assessment in a history area? We also want to keep students interested in coming to school. There are students that are interested in history and they, the only elective course they can take is an AP course. Well, they may not be a AP student, which there's a lot of writing, a lot of reading in those classes that they not, might not be able to handle. The Pennsylvania Local History Class is an elective where someone that is interested in history and Pennsylvania Local History might be of interest to students that are not just interested in history. So we're providing them with opportunities that they can enjoy the classes they're taking as well. We are down to two history teachers right now.
What does that do with the budget, Mr. Leonard?
He's muted.
I mean, I mean.
You know, we're, we're, we're at fifty-seven now when it comes to professional staff. I mean, that's just something that some will have to, you know, the the state has us gaining additional subsidy. And we do have money for instruction with the RPSR fund. So that's something, you know, that I'm going to have to work out within the budget and present by the end of the month.
And now I know when we got rid of a history teacher or when he retired, we had a professional that was very well educated in history but was not currently teaching history. I don't know if he's still in the high school or not, but would we put that into consideration when filling the new staffing?
We actually have three teachers who are certified to teach history that are not teaching history right now. They have certification in other areas as well, which is where they're being utilized. But yes, we would definitely take that into consideration.
Perfect, thank you.
Don't we think we ought to vote on this when we see we have the money to do it?
I think now's the time to do it and we work it into our budget for next year. I couldn't say anything better than what you said on how we need.
Well, it's with, with this, it's, it's like, you know, what comes first, the chicken or the egg? With this motion of contingent upon adequate staffing, if we can't work it out, but then if you work it into the budget, but yet it's not approved, then it's, you know, we, we have to start somewhere. And I think this is probably a logical step. And just say with, with, with adequate staffing. And then when we go through the budget process, we can determine where that is.
If Ben, at the high school, I'm sorry.
No, 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 go ahead.
We've delayed our scheduling process to see what gets approved here with the board because that's something on the scheduling sheets, what class they will be taking, the students will be taking next year. So that's why it's here now because we need this information to start scheduling students for next year. But I agree with Doug. You know, we have to make sure we can provide, you know, pay for this in our budget.
Yeah, that's one. I, I also forgot, and I was, I'm glad you reminded me. Mr. Leonard, I would like finance, everybody in the board to get a list of the teachers and their current subjects they're teaching and the number of students they have. We always get it at budget time and I've been forgetting it and.
Yeah.
Just tell them now.
With this budget season of it, you know, the state has just given their budget and that's under discussion exactly how much everyone will get. There's still federal dollars floating around the state. We know what ours is because we've already projected that for the next two years to try to spread that out so we can ease out of that federal money when it disappears. That and just finding out the insurance rates. Everything is just, you know, it's, it's hard to get, you know, at, at some point, you just have to pull the trigger and say, here's a budget. We can start looking at it and then these other changes come in. But I'll have that to the board in the next week or two. So you can see where all of that lies based on what the presumed local revenue will be as well as what we know our federal funds are. And then, you know, I'll, I'll presume that we're going to get at least a portion of the state increase, but probably not everything that they promised in the governor's budget. And that will give us a decent starting point. I think with this one position, I think we're well within our bounds of where the budget, budget is going to come out. But, you know, I, like I said, I think we have to start with, with what we're going to offer and then we can look at what that costs. And if it doesn't work out, we've, we've, you know, we're one step ahead of where we would be.
Yeah, I think that if, if we believe that it makes sense academically to put it on the table and then figure that out and all those, and be able to look at all those pieces and say, how do we make it work? Or what's not going to work and we make those decisions down the line?
I'm not opposed to it. I mean, I second motion. I ju- I just want to understand that.
Sure.
We're only allowed to raise the budget two point six percent?
And and I promise you, Mr. Stockdale, this isn't a trend that we're going to keep sliding in new teachers. It's just a need, I think, that we do to have.
I think, I think it's great. I think that you guys did a great job of undoing something that we probably shouldn't have. One second. Probably shouldn't have done in the first place. And and I appreciate that your lead in trying to establish this was not based around scheduling.
Although that will be part of it.
It will be.
Not when you have thirty-five students in a class.
But there, but the, the lead criteria was not scheduling. And I also think that just to, to piggyback on what you asked, Hal, I think that the, the, the grouping here, you know, ultimately on the addition of, you know, E through G is, is all contingent upon, you know, adequate staffing, which I believe what that gives us the opportunity to do is put it on the table, evaluate how the budget, you know, shakes out in regards to the finances and then, you know, but I, I think it's, I think it's great. I think it's needed. And if in fact it gets to the point where we have to make some, you know, some financial decisions, at least it's there like so that we can say, you know, what do we have to give up in order to
What do we, right.
look at the actual academic side of the district? Good? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried? Yeah. It is a full-time position that we proposed.
Can someone repeat what's going on?
Alice, do you want to get up there?
No.
I know Mrs. Everlin mentioned it, but she didn't really discuss the impact of that ninth grade, where that ninth grade credit realizes. I think prior to that change, and I was at the board meeting where that was proposed and discussed, dropping that elective or that history credit. And it was, in my opinion, it was not presented with full details upfront, but that's a whole other matter. But before that, we had one entrepreneurship class, say, that's an elective and typically a tenth, eleventh, mostly eleventh and twelfth grade elective because kids don't know if they're going to entrepreneur, you know, if they're going to have their own business in ninth grade, they don't really know what they're doing. Now we have two entrepreneurship classes full. I mean, there's, they're pretty big and the bulk of it is ninth graders. That's not fair to them. They didn't want it. They don't want to be in there. We, we deal with resulting behaviors.
And I know talking to Mrs. Amor, she had to, originally in that class, they built, they created a business plan as part of that class and she had to take that part out because the ninth graders weren't able to handle that.
Well, they didn't have some of the.
They didn't have the background, right?
The background, skills or knowledge for that. So, I mean, those are the kind of things that we're talking about impacting. We've lost, and I know you've talked, do we have money in the budget? We're already offering bare bones stuff to our kids. We really are compared to what other districts can offer. And the fact that our only history elective is an AP course, man, that's not fair. That is not fair, in my opinion. And again, had I known you guys were talking about this at a curriculum committee meeting, I'd have been there to say all these things. I appreciate that you're letting me say them now in an open board meeting. I won't take up any more time. But there, if you want to have another meeting or if you want to come talk to us about it, just let us know when, when and where you're going to be. Okay? Thank you, sorry.
So quick question. You guys included the principals in the curriculum meetum, meet, sorry, meeting? But that was it? Is that how it went?
Yeah, so we scheduled it as a work session. And administration was invited, basically, not in the interest of excluding anybody, but I guess just through the, the proceedings and the way we scheduled it.
Yeah, and and we did the same for athletics and health. And I don't think there's anything malicious about it, but it's well put. Like, it's easy enough that we can get that out on social media.
Absolutely.
Get that out. So we knew we were going to have some stumbles the first month or two trying to do this. So thank you for speaking up because it gets the ball rolling to have these good discussions, so.
Yeah, absolutely. That's just why I was asking. You guys did a great job. I mean, yep, we missed some administration that would like to be there and now we know moving forward.
We'll get better.
Yeah.
But board members can't go either.
Yeah, I gotta be careful.
If we do. You see what I mean? I mean, we can't be there to hear the discussion.
I still like it the old way.
Me too.
We got to discuss stuff better.
So.
I did, I didn't know nothing about their meeting.
No.
I just get the results. There's no input.
So here's what I can tell you. As, as we talked about this many, many times, if you just, if we just said we're going to take emotions out of this and just look at the data and go back and look at the agendas from the committee of the whole meetings, they were agenda review meetings that very little, if any, public showed up to. That very little, if, if any question was called upon, yes, did public show up to those meetings occasionally and have itemized elements that they wanted to talk about? Hundred percent. Do they have the right to do that? Hundred percent. Do they have a right to come to any regular board meeting? Yes, they do. What was happening though, because I sat through them for four years, is the, the, the first Thursday of every month, the agenda was issued. The second, the second Tuesday of every month was a committee of the whole meeting. What we actually did is we sat in the library for most of the time and says, anybody have any questions in buildings and grounds? And then we, and we spent all night there asking those questions. And if you look at the statistics, the amount of time we actually changed something, brought up a new idea, removed the district and advanced the district. And if you look at the statistics, the amount of time we actually changed something, brought up a new idea or moved the district and advanced the district in regards to where we're headed was very, very minimal, single-digit percentages, if that. In the timeframe that we've had these um, crazy meetings that, that mimics that of almost every single district in the IU, which are committee meetings that have less than four board members. We're moving the needle on a lot of things that have just been talked about for many times. I a hundred percent agree that everybody wants to be involved. But the reality of it is, is what we've developed is every board member wanted to be on every committee. And what happened was nothing got done. Everybody is part of everything and no one was really part of anything at any, at any um, in, increased.
It, it's not that, it's, we, we wanna know what's happening with all the different, all the different levels.
So, so.
Too many people talking, too many people talking.
I'm sorry.
It's, no, it's okay. Everybody's talking, one at a time.
So the committees have sent all the information out of the meetings in our email. Now, if you're not comfortable with it, everybody has the right to vote no. So if you don't like the things that have been brought up from that committee, then you can vote no.
That's, that's the point. The point is, we'd like to know the process as it's going along. And hear all the conversations.
Right.
And you know, and not, not have two people of a committee and then write, administration recommends, two people showed up.
I mean, I, I, we, yeah, we gotta find a way forward because want it to, like, definitely want it to be open. Don't want anything closed about this and want y'all to feel like you're in the know. And we met for two and a half hours that Monday, going through each of these things, point by point, every question. So that's the, I think the balance we're trying to find when you have that committee of the whole meeting to really deep dive and understand these things deeply, like, y'all would have killed me if I kept you here two and a half hours. You know, I, I don't know.
Do you wanna know, do you wanna know how many people showed up to my uh, finance committee meeting?
How many?
One, me. Okay, I mean, we, all of a sudden we split this all up and nobody's there to hear anything. I mean, I don't understand why I can't hear what the administration has for two and a half hours.
Yeah, instead of two and a half minutes.
Your meeting, we put you over the limit. Yeah. So, you know.
But at the same time, emails everything that we discussed at that committee.
Email me every word she said.
I know it's not the same.
Email me every word.
But still.
I have an easy solution. We video it. We already do it to our meetings on Tuesdays, right? So why couldn't we just put it on the internet for everybody to view? If somebody has a question.
Go back to the way we were and do it the way we're doing it now.
Because we wouldn't be doing a deep dive. We would have to sit for two, two and a half hours for curriculum, an hour for the building and grounds. How long is your meeting?
We spend a half hours or two hours at the minimum on one, one, one.
Exactly. And the committee of the whole meetings, there were some meetings that were set publicly for seven minutes.
And not everybody has time to do all of them.
I mean, the reason we have committees is so that you can actually have a deep dive and make change. In my opinion, in the last sixty days, for the people that actually have put time in, entire nights and evenings devoted to these specific elements of the, of the district, we've made a tremendous progress. I, I think that we can further ex, you know, express our idea of having a committee of the whole meeting. That's totally fine and it's totally fair. But I think that the people, Mary, I have to give credit to the people that did have these meetings. They were long, lengthy discussions and no problems posting this um, so that people can show up. But I, I have to continue to say this, that every single district in the IU has committees that meet and discuss and try to make change and move things ahead. We were making no progress the way we were doing it before. Zero, none. There were things that we're actually voting on right now that have been talked about over and over and over. And these committee of the whole meetings, I'll continue to stand strong. If you guys wanna change it, I'm only one vote. But the, the committee of the whole meetings were having no advantage to the, to the progression of this district. None.
The two committee meetings, or three, that we had before we split up here with the new board, people were coming up to me and saying how glad they were for all the discussion that was happening at those meetings. So we were discussing things.
Yeah, I mean.
As, as compared to the, the prior.
But if you, if you put that into context and we had a committee of the whole meeting and we were actually, let's just be super realistic. There's ten committees. Are we gonna talk about transportation for two hours now? But some of the, the stuff that's actually being talked about right now with curriculum, uh, with personnel and athletics and health, buildings and grounds coming soon with the potential addition. Do we wanna have a committee of the whole meeting that's, that's five and a half hours long, six and a half hours long?
Also, it's more transparent to the public if we do it.
I, I know, but I, I love these discussions because by the way, no harm done, contentious debates, good, that's what we should be doing. But what I'm gonna say is that I've sat, and I, I'm not gonna mention names, but I've sat in these committee of the whole meetings where there's people sitting in there, they cannot wait for these things to be over.
This isn't what was before. We're different now.
I think that's part of the problem is the last boards. Like, I went to a lot of those committee meetings and when I spoke up, like, they just sat there and they don't discuss anything. They didn't say anything. They just, we, we don't wanna engage the public. And, and this board's different because we do wanna engage the public. We do wanna engage the administration.
I think it's awesome. And I also believe, you know, just, just to be fair to our board, I think this board works really well together. And, and even though we can have these debates, Joe and I will still talk tomorrow and say, hey, what do you think about X, Y, and Z? And so, you know, again, I think that as we progress, like, without, with, with what Alice brought up, that was a blind spot of, yeah, let's just announce it. It's no big deal. We're just trying to make changes, trying to make progression. I don't know if there's a better way to specifically include everyone again, but that, that defeats the purpose of a committee. It really does.
I mean, I, I can speak for curriculum, like, definitely going to set and advertise the next meeting. Connect with Lance about what are the possibilities for broadcast. Make sure y'all know when it's happening. You know, I.
That's a.
I think like, if that's a good intermediate next step and then, then maybe reconsider.
Is he, is Lance gonna broadcast every committee meeting? Because it's gonna take up a lot of time.
Right. I mean, I, I think that's a consideration. That's what we have to look into and figure out is what is the, the demand gonna be.
So, another thing we could talk about, we don't have to make a decision on it tonight, is that it's another meeting. But we could have committee of the whole, we could have a committee of the whole meeting periodically to report back on the individualized committees. Because certainly I don't want anybody to feel like they're not being heard or, or not, don't have an opportunity to. So I, I feel like we need to keep these hardcore committee meetings that last to do the deep dive into the, into the detail. But if, you know, if we feel that we want to, maybe it doesn't have to happen every month, maybe it's every two months. I, I don't know. Maybe it's, however you guys decide or you wanna do, but I think that would, that would produce an opportunity for everyone to hear what's being said or, or, or hear what's, what's going on. I'm personally not opposed to that. It, it is an extra meeting. So it's something to think about. And that, I think, would kinda, that would solve and solidify all of our points. Like, it would solidify the fact that it, it gives people the time to engage with all of what's being discussed. But it also gives this, in the individual committees, the time to, you know, kinda go do their thing and, and report back.
They, not, all the committees would have this much all the time. A lot of times, curriculum, you wouldn't have hardly anything, you know what I mean? And I don't mind them going off and that was part of the idea. But it's still, uh, when we had the committee of the whole, to come back and discuss it with the rest of the board. So we could throw it back and forth, so we could throw in our ideas too. You know what I mean?
Yeah, can I repeat back the idea? Is it, so what would have happened is, like, we actually met the Monday before the scheduled committee of the whole. So we would have that, curriculum might have that deep dive, then that Tuesday, report back what was discussed and worked on, discuss the agenda items, so the whole board could be involved. And then we'd have this voting meeting. That's the idea.
So let me just ask though, what's the point of having four people on a committee if we wanted to do these smaller groups? Like, what's the point of having four people on a committee if they can't meet separately and bring everything back to the whole group?
Cause it.
Maybe I'm just missing something, but.
Oh, that's exactly where I was coming from. I thought it was great. You guys that are on the curriculum committee did a great job. You then sent an email to the board telling everybody what you guys did. And then if anybody had any questions or anything, then was your time to speak.
So let me ask, so how many people were on the finance committee?
Four.
Can't see where your mouse is.
You know how many showed up?
So, that's, that's my thing though, is if you're volunteering and want to be on this committee, then maybe we should try and stress. And I get everybody can't make every meeting. I completely understand that. But at the same time, if you wanna be part of that committee, you know, then, then participate, you know, that's why we have them.
She only had two because it says administration recommends. You know, they couldn't even get the whole committee there.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not blaming anybody. I'm just saying, when we had the committee of the whole, we had a whole lot of people talking about it. Now we're, now we're spending all our time talking about, talking about it and not getting more information from the administrators.
I think, if I may, if I may, I don't, I don't wanna enter, I don't wanna step on any of these toes here. Um, but I think um, what President Blazi was suggesting is you, you can continue with the deep dives. You do those deep dives for those people that are on the committee. There, and everything is public. There's no question about that. But then you can do a committee of the whole where every committee comes back and reports out. And it won't be as detailed, but it will be a synopsis of the, of what you'd be recommending to, to the full board. And at that point, you can have questions. So when somebody comes here tonight, we, we've had a thorough understanding of what's being proposed by, by, by the committee.
Plus, we can also have the public input.
And you get your public input.
Yeah, and I, I, I think this is awesome discussion because what this board is starting to transition out of and into is that if you also look at the past development of the agenda items, they were, they were required elements to move the district ahead. Much of the information that shows up on the agenda is because the administration needs this to happen to continue their, their daily life. What's happening now with these deep dive committees is that we're actually getting some things done that are not, not actually deemed as absolutely necessary to conduct business a- as a school, which is what's going to advance our district. But I'm totally, and I, I don't, um, just to dwell on what you said for a second, because I actually think it's a good idea as well. Is there anything wrong, John, with, I mean, I know it's added, but with, uh, videoing these? Because I do know that, um, I, I know a lot of people that watch the meetings. I don't know how many people are on.
There's nothing wrong with that.
Because I mean, it is, it is another option.
It's, it's gonna create a, a lot of extra work for uh, Mr. Bada.
I think we should investigate it. Like, we did, we're, we're conjecturing about the workload. And if Lance tells us, like, yes, this is gonna be insurmountable, then we'll look for a different way. But I, you know, I don't think we should conjecture. I think that's something we should investigate and see if it's feasible.
It's not so much a Zoom meeting, but it's putting out to public.
Yeah, I mean, I know on Zoom, there's a button that says broadcast live to YouTube. I don't know if it's really that simple. Again, I'd wanna ask Lance. I, you know, I, I think we should investigate it.
Yeah, we can uh, uh, we can figure, you know, figure something out.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want you here every night of the week for two and a half hours or anything, but, you know, just to find out more.
Yeah, all of these curriculum stemmed from Mary Elise, uh, working with district goals. And, and, and the goals were kind of simple, like, how do you increase PSSA? Well, it's not about the test. It's about all these things, all these changes. So that was kind of what led to that. So, those goals that she was soliciting before.
Yeah. And I think transitionally too with the, you had asked Shelly about, like, why is there four people on the, on the committee? And I think that what you said is a hundred percent true and direct. But your interests should lie where your interests lie, where you wanna get engaged, wanna get involved, wanna be part of it. I think what we're trying to transition out of is the, the old way of thinking in regards to committees. Like, hey, what committees do you wanna be on? How about buildings and grounds? Sure. How about finance? Sure. How about policy and procedures? Sure. And then what happens is extremely, if any, participation. So I think that we're, I knew we'd get there because this was contentious even starting it. So we're starting to progress into um, sort of level setting, um, making the stakeholders happy, making the board happy. So I think we can identify in, as we move forward, when those meetings may be. As far as committee of the whole, do we keep them on the Tuesday? You guys still have your committee meetings and kill two birds with one stone in regards to some of what Hal and, and Joe were asking for.
You could still have the, like I said, the, their committee meetings, especially if something like you did here comes up and you can meet with the right people and stuff, the administration, or different ones in the administration to help you out. But just come back to where maybe we had some ideas that you didn't have. You know what I'm saying? I'm not saying that we're trying to interfere with it. What you, you did great, you did great work here. It's, no, you really did.
Well, I, I do wanna clarify, it's really the administrators. Like, I, I said, what are the areas of need? Can we have a, a meeting where you tell us the areas of need and then they, you know?
You brought it forward. You brought it out and brought it forward. You know, so uh, like I said, it, it's still, we still could have had uh, some input into it or had some ideas, not that we would have. You know, there's always that chance.
Absolutely. I think, I think, I think we're doing the right things and we're asking the right questions. And I, I think the public's asking the right questions, like, this needs to be done in an open way. We need some checks on the system, you know, like, there's, it kinda feels like there's a backlog of work to do. Things that need to be done and changed. Doug's laughing. You know, and we don't, we don't wanna slow that down, but, you know, there is such a thing as like pendulum swings. We wanna be careful of not moving so fast that we don't make wise decisions. And, and so I think this idea of what are the checks and balances on the system is, is smart. Um, and I, I like the proposal put forth to kinda repurpose the way we use that committee of the whole.
Good deal. So with that.
I believe I was about to read item H. All right. Item H, administration recommends adding the technology education, manufacturing and construction and power lab courses contingent upon adequate staffing. And I so move.
Second, so we can have a conversation.
Did we vote on the history topic? Oh, it was just a yea or nay? Okay.
All right.
Oh, thank God.
Got lost.
I know we're going totally rogue here, but just to clarify, uh,
Would be the same.
If in fact we don't do a roll call and I hear uh, a nay, we'll pull it back and do a roll call so that there's clarification on the voting. So, but right now you're taking H? Hal, any discussion?
I, yeah, I said something. Now I forgot my question.
So I probably can figure out what it is. This is not a new hire or a new position. Uh, this position was approved uh, last summer. And we, it was the teacher that also did the STEAM courses. Um, and we're still having some issues, concerns I have with safety. Uh, these were some of the classes that were in place before when we had two um, industrial tech or tech ed teachers. And working with Mr. Comro, he kinda mapped out for me, like, you could have someone teaching woodshop in one room and someone teaching metal shop in the other room. And if a kid from woodshop had to go over and do something in the metal shop room, there was somebody there that was supervising. It's hard to take the whole class over for one student to do one thing and take the class back. They're losing instructional time or time to work. So what had been on the past is some of these topics were combined into one class with one teacher. But you've already approved two teachers, so we would like to bring some of these classes so we can separate the kids, focus in one room, focus in the other room. But if you need to send one over to the other room, there's already a teacher there who's supervising. But if you need to send one over to the other room, there's already a teacher there who's supervising.
But it's still just that net gain of one for the high school.
There's no gain this year, it's from last year.
Yep.
What was that? That confused me.
It's not a new hire this year, this coming budget season. It was one that was approved last year for the STEAM.
The STEM teacher who's doing English or history or whatever and some arts.
Yeah, so she's going to work with the appropriate certifications with that additional history position to make sure that all the coverage, but for the high school, it's just a net of one. But it's the rescheduling and using the certifications in those areas.
And to get someone highly qualified in all positions, rather than emergency certifying to cover positions. So it is a net of one teacher, whether it be in history.
History teacher or whatever.
Or wherever.
On all these things.
Were you trying to get a dual certified teacher?
Uh, we have several dual certified teachers on staff. What I'd really like to do is find someone that's certified in tech ed and can do the STEAM courses as well as the tech ed courses. We have somebody emergency certified in that position right now, doing a fine job. Maybe we won't be able to find that person, so we then look for a history teacher. Being dual certified is definitely a plus when it comes to hiring new staff members. It gives myself a lot more flexibility.
Well, yes, you don't have that large a staff.
Yes, yep.
Or that large of a student body. I mean, when you got thirty seven kids, you can't have them in fourteen different classes.
I agree.
Where were we?
So this is just adding some of the the course language back to, instead of making it industrial arts one, two, and three as one class. So you had three levels of students in one class. This is separating it out more into more specialized in industrial arts one. Or the first one is the technology education, which is a prerequisite. The manufacturing and construction is the woodshop side, the power lab is the metal shop side. So the change that was made when they eliminated the position was to put everything together. And then you had different levels of students in one class and one teacher trying to cover two rooms. And there were lots of promises made as to how that was going to be done, and I have not seen that really successfully done without redesigning the the tech ed department, the facility.
I want to speak to that just a little bit because I I've been thinking a lot about this and it's come up a couple of times tonight, like the size of our school, the size of our student body. Yes, we are a smaller school district, but we are a school and we are educating the future of our county. So the analogy that I like to think about is when you build a house, it doesn't matter what size the house is, you still need a plumber, an electrician, a carpenter, an architect, like there's still a minimum number of like these specialties and these different professionals that you need. So I think what I want to put forward is, of course, we want to be mindful of the budget, we're going to be careful. But like, we really do want to think about what is best for the kids' education and start there and then like work backwards. So it just, just something that's on my mind quite a bit in these discussions.
Well said, agree.
And the crowd erupts.
Can't be said any better. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, sorry, I'm I'm happy that that was so well received, so I got lost for a second. All right, item I, administration recommends approval of the AP United's its government, world, history, and psychology textbooks, and I so move.
Motion is second, any questions? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Ms. Kaler, I was going to put J and K together, would you rather? Okay. Okay. Um, administration recommends approval of the adoption of Hegarty Phoenemic Awareness as a universal curriculum in grades K to two and as intervention in grades K through six. And recommends approval of the Wilson Foundation's Phonics Curriculum as a universal curriculum in grades grades K through two and as intervention in grades K through six, and I so move.
Motion is second, any questions?
What are they?
Absolutely. So the Hegarty Phoenemic Awareness is up first, that is one of
I think she has something in your folder.
Yes, there are handouts in the folder as well.
So before we vote, can we read it? Totally fair.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
I was gonna say, I have mine right here, I think.
I think there's a stapled packet that starts with a memo from the elementary school.
This.
There should be two, one for Hegarty and one for foundations.
Probably got, I probably have it here, but we haven't had time to read it all. I mean.
That's it.
This one?
No, 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 I'm sorry.
Next one?
Maybe.
They're on the letterhead.
Yeah, these were also included in the committee board packet when it was first sent out as well, so.
Yeah, so I, we sent it with the committee packets.
Yeah.
And then I wanted it placed in the folder, yep. So uh, so you all had it in hand, so you could see it.
No, I mean, it was, it was just to give the administration, this is, this was available last Thursday.
Okay.
Or two Thursdays ago, yeah, sorry.
Okay, now explain to me what it is, because I look at all these, boy, a lot of words. A lot of words.
So when you're looking at the five main.
Lot of words.
I'll break, I'll break it down. When you're looking at the five main components of teaching reading and the science of reading, you're looking at phonemic awareness, which is what the Hegarty curriculum is speaking to, which I'll backtrack to that. Phonics, vocabulary, fluency, and comprehension. So our ultimate goal is to have fluent readers who can comprehend. In order to get them there, students need to be able to decode words. And that breaks it down into phonemic awareness and phonics. So phonemic awareness is when you're just using auditory, you're hearing the sounds, you're not putting the visual letters, the print to it. You're just manipulating sounds, making substitutions um, with an auditory program like Hegarty. So Hegarty would be universally implemented K to two. It also could meet the needs of many of our students. It was an intervention K to six, so it has, you know, different layers to it that it would be beneficial. Uh, the phonics, the foundations, is a curriculum that works with phonics, which is when you put the sounds with the actual letters. Um, which is another component of learning to read. Both of these are crucial to reading mastery. Uh, currently, the Journeys program has some watered down phonemic awareness. Our title teachers and reading specialists do this with as interventions. But as far as a universal curriculum, we don't have that for phonemic awareness. So the Hegarty would be a new program. It's the ease of use for teachers is 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 very easy. Um, it takes about fifteen minutes to implement a lesson, very engaging, there's hand motions, very, um, there's a training that teachers would do to teach them how to implement the lessons. So that would kind of hit that area of the phonemic awareness. The phonics instruction, um, we have Distar that we are using, but it is not K to two. And it's kind of hit or miss as far as what we're doing in the classroom. So we've definitely highlighted some inconsistencies in the classroom. Our students are kind of bouncing around with, you know, it's no fault of our teachers, but bouncing around learning this letter, keyword, sound in this classroom, this letter, keyword, sound in that classroom, and it is impacting our reading. Um, DIBL scores, PSA scores, the reading data supports the need for these programs. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions, it's kind of a highlight of them.
I'd like to jump in, uh, to just mention that the other area that this will impact, um, that I project that it will impact is our special education population. Um, I'm really excited for these interventions because I think that uh, that will be providing those those interventions earlier, so that hopefully we will see less students uh, later that are identified as having reading disabilities. I think it will help to tease apart uh, how many are true reading disabilities versus uh, just missing some of these key, like phonemic things and phonics instruction or other building blocks to reading. I think that this is, um, this is going to to really be impactful that way. So, um, we've had some really good conversations about that, as well as, I didn't jump in when we were talking about, um, the curriculum uh, changes at the high school level. I think that's really going to be, um, very, very important for supporting our students that do struggle academically as well. Um, we've had good conversations about how that will uh, help our students that do have disabilities and also our students that don't have disabilities but struggle academically for other reasons. So it will kind of pick up both of those populations.
And also to highlight, when you're looking at like an MTSS framework or for behavior academics, you really want eighty percent of your students to respond to those universal interventions, academic or behavioral interventions. And currently, we have the data to support that our tier one needs some love. Um, especially when it comes to um, reading instruction, math. We just adopted the new Reveal Math program this year to address the universal needs with math. So now we're shifting into, you know, that deep dive into ELA.
Samantha, can you expound when you say universal for these programs, what we're doing now and what that means?
Yes, absolutely. So a universal program would be what every child receives in a grade level. So take kindergarten, for example, we should be able to say every child in the regular education classroom and inclusion classrooms in a kindergarten class in our school is receiving this instruction, hitting these standards. We're using these instructional practices, we're using these behavior expectations. And when there's no consistency there, you start to see some breakdown in what we call the universal or tier one. So, um, that's an area that we really want to strengthen because once you have so many students that aren't responding to what you're doing at universal tier one, then you end up having a lot of students needing interventions in tier two or more even severe ones in tier three. So it's it's kind of like a triangle um, of need, so we're really trying to strengthen the foundation of our literacy program and as well as mathematics, um, to be able to meet a lot more needs in the regular ed classroom without the intervention supports.
And the the way that that will help in the special education, kind of building off of that is uh, if all of the students are receiving the same tier one instruction and then we have, you know, hopefully eighty percent of the students are going to respond well to that, then we're going to have a group of students that might not, and they need some more intensive um, interventions. But that will help us to know at that level, we know all of the students received this really good, you know, like solid foundation here. This little group of kids might need a little bit different intervention. But then those students, if there are students there that aren't responding to the more intensive interventions, then they would get a referral to see if they um, are in need of special education services. And we're missing some of those components right now. Um, our teachers are doing a really nice job at, we have some good team discussions, but we don't always have the data to support some of the referrals. It's just kind of like, well, I've been teaching for a long time, I know, I know these kids, this kid's having a hard time in my class. And uh, and we're relying very heavily on our school psychologist, just her, her evaluation data. And sometimes it's kind of, it's kind of like, well, maybe it's a disability, but maybe it's these other factors. This will help us tease out some of that a little bit, so I'm really excited about that part.
And these two programs are both research-based, evidence-based, you know, tried and true. They are not just the new trendy thing in education, um, they are core foundational literacy skills and programs.
We do have a learning support teacher that has been using some of the foundations, um, pieces from, she had been trained uh, when she had worked elsewhere, and she really has seen some nice gains and using that in the small population of students that she's been working with. Uh, so that's another reason that I'm excited about that.
Back to you. Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
All right, item L, administration recommends approval of the proposed senior class trip scheduled for May twenty third to May twenty fifth. Should be twenty twenty two, and I so move.
Second.
Motion is second, any questions on the trip? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And final, oh, sorry, final item, item M, an informational item. Uh, a list of textbooks for disposal is available for review in the district office.
Awesome, thank you. Did you have anything else?
Just wanted to say, like, you know, just a huge amount of gratitude for our administration and our teachers who, you know, have have worked to get all this identified and and for us to act on it. It just, I, every, every single meeting, I feel more and more positive um, about the direction we're going and and really happy that this is the team we have in place, so thank you.
Good deal. Personnel? Crystal?
All right, um, A, the board recommends a motion to appoint Acting Superintendent Doug Lindner to the position of Superintendent of the Sullivan County School District to become effective July first, two thousand twenty two, contingent upon a mutual agreement between Mr. Lindner and the Board of Directors on a salary, terms, and conditions of the position to be set forth in a superintendent contract and to be further ratified by this board when completed, and I so move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any questions? Roll call?
Blasi?
Yes.
Derlin?
Yes.
Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
King? Is he muted?
Yes.
McCusker, yes. Nolan?
Yes.
Stockton?
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Good luck.
Uh, motion carried?
That's because Crystal. Not yet, that's contingent.
Congratulations, Doug.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your confidence.
Item B, administration recommends the addition to add Marilyn Seisock as custodial substitute list, and I so move.
Second.
Motion is second, any questions? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried?
Administration recommends the acceptance with regret of a letter of retirement from, I think that said Michelle Minier. It was handwritten, from Food Services, and I so move.
Second.
Motion is second, any questions? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Item D, administration recommends approval to post and advertise for the food service vacancy, and I so move.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried?
Administration recommends approval of request for paternity leave from Ryan Hembury, and I so move.
Second.
Any questions? Uh, I have a question, how long is that, is the timeframe?
He's using sick time.
Week or two.
I think he put in like five to ten days. I think that's what the request said.
And he's not quite sure of when, so, but it's.
Because babies don't seem to have a schedule.
Kind of a just in case.
Yeah.
Good plan, good plan. That's cool. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carried?
Item F, administration recommends Item F, administration recommends approval of the appointment of a homebound instructor based on a student requirement, and ISO move.
Second.
Any questions on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried?
Can I ask a question before we move beyond personnel?
Yes.
If we're down custodians and we have people on the substitute list, can't we have a substitute work every day? I mean, you're asking for work. Or why would you get on the list?
Uh, Hal, I believe some of the people that are on the substitute list, uh, work for us during day, day shift hours. So if they're, if they're available to do night shift, I think sometimes they do, but they're already employed with us during the day.
They would also be available for summer hours then, or if we had weekend work and shifts.
I don't think that answered my question. My question was, if we have substitutes and we're short custodians, shouldn't we have substitutes in there every day? Well, ask them, they won't be full-time, and if not, at least temporary until we get somebody hired every day. Say, come on in, you're substituting every day until we get somebody in there. Why run short?
Every day they can, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's true, but, I mean, I don't currently have anybody that's, would be available to do that.
What about this Marilyn Seisock?
She's, she works for the district, and she's, can only work a few, I'm not sure on her schedule. Uh, we added here last month Kathy Herrmann. She also works for the district, but she can only work like two days a week, three hours a night. So it's very limited. But it's hell. Yeah, yeah.
You kind of take them from one position or the other. Well, which one are you gonna have a substitute?
No, but I mean, I thought we had substitute, like we have substitute teachers who don't work for us, okay?
Yeah.
And if we don't have a teacher in, they work every day.
Yeah.
Okay? And if we are short two custodians and we have substitutes.
Gotcha.
That's what I meant.
Roger.
All right.
Okay, policy and procedure. Administration recommends approval of a change of, in educational qualification for custodian and maintenance custodian job descriptions, an ISO move.
Second. Any questions?
Can we say what that is?
Yeah, um, I believe it was either two months ago or last month, uh, when we talked in that, uh, there was a requirement for a high school, uh, graduate, and we just changed that from high school graduate to, uh, can read and understand written directions. That's not a position that we need to have someone with a high school, um, diploma in. And there are a lot of eligible candidates out there, and, um, you know, I don't consider that a bona fide educational qualification for that position. As long as they, as long as they can read and understand, that's, that's what we need in that position.
I understand. I just wanted to make sure we knew what it was, what the change was.
Good deal.
Did we go?
No. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried?
Item B, administration recommends a change to the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school calendar to reflect the use of April fourteenth as a makeup day and half-day morning session, an ISO move.
Second. Any questions?
Was that originally the whole day off?
Yeah, the, uh, the day before was the half-day, but since we're now using that day, the next day becomes the half-day. So it actually changes the calendar.
Okay.
So, so in your new calendar, you'll see the, the half-days move to the next day now.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried? Anything else? Uh, Transportation's informational item. District and, uh, transportation contractors coordinated to alleviate overcrowding on bus SE eight. Last stop will be picked up at SC seven, provided both buses with room for students with sports bags, instruments, or bus transfer notes.
Yeah, that was kind of a, a change that we could, that was like low-hanging fruit, you know what I mean? Um, we have, uh, both of the buses come around the corner there in Dewshore, but the last bus, or last several bus stops for SE eight can be picked up by SC seven, and then that creates about ten extra seats on both buses, uh, because that was some of the parent complaints that, you know, the, um, there, there wasn't enough room for sports bags and if a kid had a note, uh, to change buses there. If we need to make additional changes, there are additional routes that we could coordinate, but they would be earlier in the route, and that would be best done at the beginning of the, of next year to change stops and route times. But these, it only affects the buses by maybe a minute or two because you're just making a left instead of a right there in Dewshore, so, yep.
Good deal.
Thanks.
Uh, Anthony, have anything?
Um, I'd like to thank Ms. Carpenter for speaking up, like I really appreciate it. And, uh, it, it's point well taken. I, uh, I'll, I'll accept the responsibility on that. I should have done better and got that out there. But that's, thanks for coming and clarifying that. And the next thing is, is I, uh, I'm ecstatic with the curriculum changes, like awesome job. And that's all.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Good.
Here?
No, I'm good.
Crystal?
Nope, I'm good.
Heather? Hal?
I gave everybody a report, um, today on the IU meeting, and, uh, I also sent you another thing of something they're doing educationally on your email today. You can look that over. And that's it.
Thanks for, uh, taking on the, the blast and, or hanging with it. Uh, Heather, already, you already said no. Mary Lee's?
Just similar to Anthony, right? Once you know better, do better. And so we'll, uh, gonna get on it tomorrow, um, scheduling and then advertising the next curriculum meeting and connecting with Lance about possibilities for broadcast. And just, yeah, appreciate all the, the work everyone's doing.
Shelley?
I'm good.
Awesome. Uh, I just wanted to say, congrats, Doug. Hopefully we can work out a prime contract.
Oh, within the budget that the business manager would accept.
And, uh.
Are we gonna advertise for a business manager?
Yeah, I think what, what we'll do is then, I, I guess the good news about moving some of this stuff ahead is it allows us to, to advance a lot of things that we've been kind of waiting on because technically the acting superintendent really couldn't participate or get heavily involved technically in district s- uh, style goals. Um, so I think this, there's a couple of things we've done. I think big success, we brought John, uh, through his firm on board. Now we have our, our superintendent on board officially. We have the administration, uh, sorted as far as new principles. I think we can now move ahead with having, uh, the, um, the board retreat, which we had talked about, was kind of difficult to do without legal counsel. So there's a lot of things that have moved ahead, um, and we've advanced. So I think now that Doug's technically on as superintendent, and then he could start the program and lead, actually lead the search instead of the board directly leading the search for, um, business manager, which I think works super, because he has been business manager for so long. So I think the, the, the aspect of, um, vetting out, um, and bringing in prime candidates will be well-handled by him. I'm not, not putting all the pressure on you, but, um, you know, it'd be nice if we get another decent business manager. But yeah, I think, I think it really advances and moves us ahead. So, and again, congrats to Colton. So he, he did good, and he's young, so chances are that he'll continue to, to progress. That was fun watching. I, I think it was cool to, I, I have to bring this up because some of the things the board's trying to change, we're, we're doing things differently a bit. Um, I think our views went up because it's, it's better than watching normal TV, I think, sometimes. But I, you know, there was a, it was sort of mini and it was thrown together at the last minute, but I, I want to bring it up, but when Colton, when they announced that he was going to states, it's just, it's one student, and, um, there was kind of a mini parade that happened. And one thing that was brought out is that, I think we need to do that more because, um, I cannot remember their names, but I know that there was also some, some students that went to states for, uh, some other things. I can't remember if it was maybe Mal- Mallory Dickinson.
It was Mallory Dickinson and, um.
For chorus and.
The brown boy. I forget his first name.
Of course, and, uh, also for, um.
FBLA, we have a bunch headed to FBLA in April.
Yeah, so I just, I thought it was cool to, to, that it sort of started with that, but I think that what we're trying to actually do, and we even had, not that we're changing it, but we had, we had, um, talked about even changing the name of the athletics and health com- committee to something different than athletics, uh, essentially, so we can start to engage and involve all these, all these students. So not to dwell on the fact that there was people out there sort of cheering Colton on, but that's the type of, like, community interaction that we want to try to gain. So again, not to dwell on the aspect of, um, Alice, what you had said about the committee meetings, but it's super valid that our intent is not to actually go into shielding our conversations and, and communication. It's, it's, it's really an intent to, and it was an oversight on our part, but I also think that, huge move, but believe it or not, we actually took two agenda items at one time and made a motion and combined them into one. So like, there's just, I, 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 I know I laugh about th- those type of things, but it's like, they're, they're the type of things that, like, we're sort of advancing and pushing change, um, a bit. We're having open discussion and dialogue without getting too wild and crazy during the public meetings. And I don't want to say getting too loose, but I, I think these type of discussions are, are needed to, to advance us. So, um, I could go on and on and on. I won't anymore, but I, I, I really feel you're fired. Okay, I can't do that. Oh, wait, I quit. Um, anyway, so really appreciate it, everybody.
Hey, I, I just want to say, um, I want to make a comment about Colton. That young man has such poise and such humility with such talent. I am just really impressed by him. And I just gotta say, you know, I wanted T-shirts made up that said, rocking the mullet, bringing the gold, but, uh, I was, I, you know? But, uh, you know, I, I, I really gotta say, you know, that, you know, he, he, his performance at, at that age is just incredible.
Yep. Good deal. Um, if, we will look into trying to advance when these meetings are and figure out committee of the whole and all that stuff. There's actually probably going to be three meetings in April because of the budget meeting, but, uh, we'll figure that all out and sort of communicate that back. But if there's nothing else that anyone has, um, we can, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Public input.
Why not?
Two and a half minutes.
We don't even have time, Dennis, do we?
No.
I know.
Sorry, time's up.
There you go.
That wasn't two, that wasn't two and a half minutes.
Yeah, but I set the timer when you started before, so.
All right, so for, this is important because I do have to, I misspoke earlier. There is actually, I've been, I was getting texts while, but I'd misspoke earlier. There's actually two electives in the social studies department. I don't want to, you to leave without that information. The other is psychology, but it is an A, uh, dual enrollment course, primarily geared toward, towards students who are going to a four-year college. So that, I need to clear that up. I misspoke earlier. Um, my other comment is, well, I have two more. I appreciate the board's willingness to consider adding a faculty member, because we've lost several over the past, um, several years. And, um, by, I just need to give you some food for thought. By adding that second teacher in these, in the shop department, there is the potential to bring dual enrollment courses to the shop program, which we have not been able to do. It was, um, in, in discussions, the previous guidance council was working pretty hard on that when they eliminated that shop position. And with the elimination of that position, they could no longer offer the dual enrollment. They didn't have the faculty to do it. So that's, that, I, I believe that our shop kids, we have some pretty talented shop kids, for lack of a better term for them, and I think that's an underserved population. Um, we, the recent push has been for college-bound everything, and I think we're missing the boat on a lot of those sk- talented, skilled kids that need some opportunities. I think the dual enrollment that the previous guidance council was working on was through Penn College. They offer not only two four-year programs, but they offer certificate programs. So that's something for you to think about, um, when you're considering whether we have the money somewhere to add. Um, I liked Ms. Nolan's comments about, you know, you have to build the house. We are a small school, I get it. It's not the kids' fault that there's not that many kids here. But it is our fault that we're not offering them as much as we can offer them before they leave. That's not fair to them. That's my opinion. And then the last question is a question, so you're advertising for a full, full-time AD position? And I didn't hear any discussion of where that's fitting in the budget and what that proposed salary is. Can anybody answer that, or is that going to be something that's up for discussion at another board meeting?
Well, I think the, the little bit we discussed was it all depends on the qualifications of the candidate. If we get candidates, we, we haven't really got that far yet. I know there's been some numbers.
Hal was okay with that? Did, he didn't have a number or?
He actually threw his name in the hat and he was gonna leave the board, I heard.
Okay. Okay. I didn't hear that though, because I didn't have the thing then. Okay. But we usually know there's a ballpark. I mean, this AD's a brand-new position. So anyway, okay, that's all. I won't take up any more time. But I do appreciate the willingness to discuss, would like to participate in future discussion.
Thanks. Lance, is there any other public input?
Uh, there is not.
All right. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?